I will start off the meeting of the Monmouth City Council of Tuesday, August 6th, by calling this to order and having our city recorder, Phyllis Bowman, do the roll call.
Counselor Belts is excused. Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Sharmar?
Here.
Counselor Schinkel is on his way. Counselor Sobrenagle is excused. Mayor Kuntz?
I am here, thank you. And we will do the flag salute tonight, and if Counselor Carey, you could lead us in that, please?
Happy to.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is one of those evenings when we have several different kinds of business to conduct as the Monmouth City Council and also as the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency. And so, we'll go a little bit out of order this evening, and we will start off with this regular meeting of the Monmouth City Council. We will then adjourn to become the Urban Renewal Agency, and we will have a presentation and a discussion as that body. That body will then go into executive session. We will return to become the Monmouth City Council, and we will have our Monmouth City Council Work Session, which consists of one item tonight. And then, we will have an executive session also for that body, and I will read those scripts to announce those, so that folks know what those are. The city council will be meeting in executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiator consultations. The executive session will be held pursuant to ORS 192-662-D, Labor Negotiator Consultations, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room, and no decision will be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room, although that'll be the last item of the evening, and it is not anticipated that any action will be taken after returning from that executive session. Prior to that, the Urban Renewal Agency will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing exempt public records. That executive session will be held pursuant to ORS 192-662-F, Consideration of Exempt Public Records, which allows the agency to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff or other persons shall be allowed to attend that executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room, and representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations that will occur during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, for the Urban Renewal Agency, we will return to open session, welcoming the audience back in the room, and it is also not anticipated any action will be taken after that executive session. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure what you announced, I wasn't listening that closely, but the executive session on labor negotiations?
Yes.
That is the one that allows you to exclude media?
Yes. We did not read any media statement-
Okay.
...allowing them in, so...
Okay, so media would not be included in the-
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear on the record, thank you.
So, the first, what will end up being the last executive session of the evening is not open to them. Thank you for that reminder from our wise council, so...
Will we package those executive sessions end to end?
Probably not. We're going to go ahead, take care of the Urban Renewal Agency, executive session first, return for. Our work session tonight just consists of our public hearing training-
That's true.
-and then return to executive.
So there's no real public interest in the work session necessarily? There could be, but-
If people would like to return from the Urban Renewal Executive Session to hear us be trained on how to conduct a public hearing, of course, they'd be welcome. But no, we won't be discussing any other business, so, yeah. We changed the agenda up a little bit to accommodate that and to accommodate interested parties into our executive session that we are allowed to invite into the Urban Renewal Executive Session, so... Okay, sorry, that's all that business. And now, we get to the routine stuff, which we will start off this evening with our consent calendar. Tonight, that consists of minutes of the council meeting of July 16th, and also the minutes of the council work session of July 16th. So I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to approve that consent calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And any opposed? Okay, that's great. And so, our first thing this evening, we have a presentation from our local area transit company, and that is known as Chariots. And Manager McClure, if you want to, if we have anything we need to know about this presentation this evening?
Yeah, actually, I think I'll turn to Stonecliff from Chariots, and it's a new bus service, I think, because it's pretty exciting. They're doing some modifications, and I'll let Ted tell you about it, so...
All right. Excuse me, your name is Ted Stonecliff? Yes, it is. Is it spelled just the way it sounds? It's spelled the way it sounds, with an E on the end. Ah, okay, thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city councilors, for having me tonight. It's wonderful to be here, and it's a pleasure to have a small portion of your very busy meeting tonight, so hopefully we won't take much of your time. But we do want to talk about our project to redesign what we call our Polk County Flex Bus Service. Let me just give you a brief background of who I am. I'm a planner for Chariots. I've been with the organization about six years, and I'm in charge of the Chariots Regional Service, which serves Marion and Polk Counties in the rural areas. Tonight, we're going to talk about the existing transit services offered here in Polk County and also in Marion County. We'll define what we call the Polk County Flex Service, which is an existing service today. We'll talk about the reasons why we want to redesign it and our proposal. We're seeking feedback on three different options, and we'll talk about next steps. Feel free to ask questions during the presentation if you like. It's fairly informal. Here's a map of our existing service. It's kind of small, so I don't expect you to read all of the things on there, but in that darker blue color, you'll see our routes labeled with the route numbers. Now, these are what we call commuter express routes. The 40X serves Monmouth with six round trips per day. That will be increased to eight round trips starting in September, as well as we'll be adding Saturday service starting in September, which is quite exciting. The 50X serves an express route between Salem and Dallas. The 40X comes from Dallas, serves two stops in Monmouth, then proceeds on to Independence and eventually into Salem. As you can see, all of our routes are kind of a hub-spoke network to and from Salem, with the exception of the Polk County Flex. And that's just in Polk County. We'll talk more about what that is later. It's not on the map. In Marion County, we have a route going out the Saniam Canyon, all the way to Mill City and Gates, with the bulk of service between Salem and Stateon. We only have two trips going all the way to Gates per day. We also have routes ending in Woodburn, one directly on the 99E corridor, but another going into Silverton and Mount Angel, eventually making it up to Woodburn. On this map, you can see we're trying to connect the dots with other systems as well. We have the Yamhill County coming into Salem, as well as service from Grand Rhond and also Lincoln City coming in all the way to Salem. That service is operated by Tillamook County Transportation District. So, and then from Woodburn, we've had the Cambie Area Transit, where we connect at the Buy Mart in Woodburn. And points north, you can connect up to Trimed in Portland. And lastly, I'll just say, we do have an express route from Salem to Wilsonville on I-5. It's called the 1X, and that does also connect with Trimed in Wilsonville. Any questions about our existing services?
Are the fares all different for all these routes?
In general, no. In general, all of the routes with a double-digit number, 10, 20, 30, 40, those are 225 for adults for a one-way ticket, 450 for a day pass. The service between Salem and Wilsonville is slightly more money, $3 for an adult on that service. And if you're a senior or someone with a disability, it's approximately half of that price. It's $1.50 for those folks who qualify.
In the Woodburn, have you toyed with the idea of getting to the Outlet Mall? Because you said in sort of on the 99 corridor, that would be quite a ways east of the-
That's correct. So, we used to go all the way to the Outlet Mall, but as you say, it's quite a distance away. And so, it's very difficult for us to connect with that Cambie bus if we were to go over there. So, we do rely on the city of Woodburn's transit service. They have buses going in that direction, and so we connect with them at their downtown location.
Nice to get some transit into that, because parking is a nightmare-
Yes.
...as most of us are aware. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure. We get a lot of questions about how we're advertising the services, because in general, it's fair to say that a lot of people don't know about Chariots Regional Transit. And so, this is a list of what we're doing today, and certainly, we're trying to improve this. But today, we advertise our services on our website and via social media, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. But we're also attending the Polk County Service Integration Team meetings. These are for social services here in Polk County. That transportation is an issue for a lot of folks getting to those services, so we're making them aware of all the services available. And recently, we went to the Music in the Park. We're sponsored this year for that venue, and we use that to get public feedback for our survey that we were doing for this project, actually. So, let's talk about what our Polk County Flex Service is. This is a flexible origin-todestination service, so it doesn't have designated stops or designated route path currently. It does have a schedule. You can see there are two columns of times here, service available in Independence/Monmouth and service available in Dallas. So, someone who would want to use the service would need to call our call center 24 hours in advance and pick one of these time windows that they would like to travel and book their trip. Hopefully, it would be available, and most of the time it is. Primarily, the service is serving seniors and people with disabilities, but it is open to the general public. I think that's a misconception that a lot of folks have, is that it's just for people with disabilities, but that's not the case. And that's something that we want to improve, the perception of the service. Essentially, the service operates within the city limits of Dallas, Monmouth, and Independence. You can travel within the cities or between the cities, and that's what the map there is trying to convey. Why are we considering a change for the service? Well, our ridership, especially at some times of the day, is very small, if not nonexistent, and not very many people know about the service. That's the true reason that we're looking at changes. We want it to be more accessible to the public, easier to use. People in general have a hard time calling 24 hours in advance and planning their life around the bus. So, it's much easier if they can just walk out to a stop and get on the bus instead. So, the proposal that we're looking at wouldn't change the hours of operation. Today, it runs from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., five days a week, and that would not change. We would still have the buses running back and forth between Monmouth/Independence and Dallas, and it would take about two hours for that cycle. But the difference is, we would be establishing a fixed path for the bus. People would still be able to call in ahead if they can't get to a stop. If you have a disability and it's too hard for you to walk out, you could still call us and ask the bus to come to you. But this is just making it an additional option for somebody who doesn't want to plan their life around a 24-hour window, and they can just get out to a stop. Do you have a question?
I must look like I do. If I can just have a hypothetical here. Say that I live in Monmouth, and I want to go to the Dallas Rotary Club meeting. What would I do? They meet at noon on Tuesdays.
Sure. Well, are you talking about today or in the future, if this were-
Well, say next Tuesday.
Okay.
And I live in Monmouth. What would I do? Take me through the steps.
So you would call our call center-
Lane is going to be there for that meeting.
Her trader on Tuesday coming up.
You would call our call center the day before.
On Monday.
On Monday.
Okay.
And tell them, you could go to our schedule here and-
And that's online?
Which is online. It's also available at our customer service in Salem. But if you don't get into Salem much, then, yeah, online is your best bet. So if you want to get to Dallas by noon, you would want that 11 to 11:30 window here in Monmouth. So they would give you a half an hour window when they would pick you up.
At my house?
At your house.
A big bus?
It's a-
A little bus.
25-foot bus.
Okay.
Yeah, so a little bigger than a passenger car.
Okay.
Not huge.
Okay, so they drive to my house and pick me up. I pay the $1.25 fare when I get on.
You pay the, it would be $1.50 if you qualify, or 225 for adults.
He doesn't think I'm a senior citizen. Isn't that sweet?
I don't want to assume. Yes, you would pay on the bus, and then you would get to your destination in that 11:45 to 12:15 window, so-
At the Civic Center downtown Dallas. Do I need to tell them where I'm going? Would they drop me off in front?
Right. Yes, they'll drop you off wherever it's safe and accessible for you to-
Ah, okay, okay.
To get to.
And then, the meeting's over at 1:00, and I want to go back home. Do I just use this phone, or do I arrange that all ahead of time?
You would have to arrange it ahead of time-
Okay, okay.
On that Monday, right.
Okay, so that I'll be leaving Dallas to go back home at 1:00?
Yes, and they would give you a half an hour window. So it looks like between 1:15 and 1:45 would be that window, and then the bus would be there. You'd get on, pay another $1.25, and then you'd get back to Monmouth.
Wow, that's really cool.
Bring lots of people.
I was thinking there was something that wasn't being said here that would, you know, that it would make it more difficult, like I had to walk down to Burgerville or something, but they come right to the house.
Not for this service. Yeah, with the 40X service, you would have to walk down to Main at Catron or Eccles Street. But with this service-
With this one, not.
It'll come and pick you up at your door.
Cool.
All right. So some of the advantages that we see for the redesign are the schedules are, would be easier to understand and use. Rather than having a window of opportunity, it would be a fixed time, you know, just like a regular bus schedule. It comes at this time, and so that's easier for people to understand. The stops would be approximately a quarter-mile spacing between each one. We'll show you a draft map of what that might look like a little later. Seniors and people with disabilities would still be able to request the bus to come to their home, and so that means that the schedule would have a little extra time built into it for those deviations to come off of the route and pick somebody up or drop them off. And that's why it would take two hours to get, to make the full loop between Dallas and Independence. With this kind of service, it would definitely be more visible to the general public, having a post with a sign in the ground. People recognize that as bus service, and so there wouldn't be a misperception, we hope, that it's only for people with disabilities. So, that's why we're saying there's a large potential for ridership increase, which is what we're looking for. We want to make the best with the money that we have, which is very limited. Okay, the next two slides are the two options that we asked the public about. Our survey did close two weeks ago. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get on your agenda until now, but the option A, if you can see, so Monmouth/Independence is on your right and Dallas on your left. We do have some larger maps, but I'll just show, in general, you can see there's a large loop, a one-way loop in Independence and a one-way loop in Dallas to kind of turn the bus around. The advantage of that loop is that it offers more coverage. However, the big disadvantage is if you're trying to go along that loop, say if you live at Main Street at Polk, kind of in the northeast part of Independence, and you want to go to the library in downtown Independence. Well, to do that, in this option, you would have to ride all the way to Dallas and all the way back to get to the library. And so, this kind of system only works for people going between cities. Really not good, except in Monmouth. You'd have two-way service here in Monmouth, but for Dallas and Independence, it offers a little more coverage, but it's not very convenient if you're doing a short trip.
But if you wanted to go from somewhere on the route in Monmouth over to, you know, Jubilee to have a cupcake in Independence, you could catch it going in that direction.
Yes, you could definitely do that. It's most convenient in either option from here in Monmouth, but option A with the one-way loops has a big disadvantage there.
Or you can take the trolley.
We don't even have a study developed on that yet.
Oh, yeah?
We hope so.
So, another thing about these maps is the color behind. You can see that, especially in Dallas, there are some areas of the city that would not have coverage. And that's trying to get the service to folks that really need it. The demographics of those outlying areas, based on U.S. Census data, shows that, and from our current ridership data, we're really not seeing much in the way of demand in those areas. So you would have to live in that colored area if you wanted to call in and ask the bus to come a little closer to you. The second option is option B, which is a two-way service model without the one-way loops in Independence and Dallas. Here, we have slightly less coverage, but for that sample trip in Independence, you would be able to make just a short trip very easily to the library without having to go all the way to Dallas. All right. I will say for option C, that is the do-nothing alternative, where we would just keep the service the same as it is today, and that is an option that some people would prefer. Now, here are the bigger maps with more detail. If you want, we can take a look. But let me just say that the routing that we're showing is not finalized. This is simply a concept. We have gotten some comments about where the bus might go, and so we'll take those comments into consideration when developing the final path. So, similar path for each option we're showing, but it just doesn't have the one-way giant loop for option B. For our survey, we had an online survey at chariots.org. We had about 85 folks participate. And I should say that this service serves between 15 and 20 people per day, so it's not a lot of people riding it. So we were pretty happy to get about 85 people to participate. And actually, most of the people were from Monmouth who participated in this survey, so maybe that was because we advertised in your water bill.
How people find out their news.
We did do some in-person events, the Riverview Market in Independence, the Polk County Bounty Market in Dallas, and Music in the Park, so... For our next steps, we'll be developing a preferred alternative in the next few weeks, and then sending that to our Board of Directors for their September 26 board meeting. And if either options A or B are chosen, then we'd be looking at installing those new stops in November and December of this year, and the new service would begin in January.
2020.
You're right. Yes, thank you. And I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Do you have any information with you regarding ridership, current ridership data as it applies to Monmouth specifically?
I don't have that with me currently. You're talking about this Polk County Flex Service?
Yes.
Yeah. We do have that. I want to say that the general pattern is from folks in Monmouth/Independence going to Dallas to work at either Garten or Goodwill. Right now, about 85% of our riders are those employees of Garten or Goodwill. And I would say it's a fairly even distribution between Independence and Monmouth. Of course, there are some who live in Dallas and go to Garten and Goodwill as well. But there are some folks who just travel within Monmouth and travel within Independence, so, yeah, there's, we could definitely get that data for you.
Just curious.
But in general, we're looking at 15 to 20 folks riding every day. And at that level, it's really a very expensive service to provide. We're really wanting 70, 80, 90 folks per day riding this service. And really, the only way to get there is by creating more of a fixed route model, so...
Certainly. Is there anything that we can do specifically? I appreciate your presentation, but I guess, is there an ask you have of us?
Well, we will be working with your staff to develop the final routing if options A or B- A or B are chosen. So that'll be really the biggest ask, is to work with your staff to, and perhaps do a kind of public information campaign so people know what's going on and they're not surprised when they see a bus stop in their neighborhood. Yeah.
So interestingly, I mean, I think as Councilor Sharmer was, you know, kind of impressed how cool this could be. What would happen if, under the current Flex route, where people literally get picked up at their doorstep and sort of custom timeframes and dropped off at custom places, if we, if you had gotten 80 or 90 people? Is there, what is the capacity?
I don't think we would be here today. If we were serving 80 or 90 with that service, then that would be great.
Oh, so there's capacity to serve that many?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm in charge of the student transportation system at my school district, so having 20 people a day to going to 80 people a day with that kind of custom routing just kind of blows my mind.
I see, yeah. It would have to be distributed throughout the day to get to that level, but where right now, most people are leaving in the morning to go to work and they come back in the afternoon. There's, there are times of the day where the bus is not serving anybody, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
So this will all take effect in January, and there will be a phone number at that time?
There will still be a phone number, yes.
Is there a phone number now?
Yes, there is.
Is it 503 something?
588.
588.
2424.
2424, okay.
Right.
Put that in my contacts.
All right.
Thank you.
And how would this work? Laurel's going over to the Dallas Rotary, and she needs to be there at noon.
Yes.
I'm also interested in going, I'm not going to the Rotary, I'm going to the Washington Street Steakhouse for a long lunch. And I'd like to be there and meeting some friends at 11:30 and plan to linger until probably 2:00.
Okay.
How's that going to impact her? Don't worry about me. How's that going to impact her?
Right, so.
And wouldn't we be on the same vehicle?
You're on the same vehicle, and the driver generally drops you off in the order of where you're, where you're going. Yeah, sometimes you're, you have to stay on the bus for a little bit longer to drop somebody off. So, yeah, she might get there in the nick of time instead of a little bit early.
Let's try it, yeah.
You know, a couple of things that I thought about in terms of your, I mean, obviously, and I'm sure you're doing and will be doing things with Western Oregon, when you get their new student week, and, and they've got an active student body over there that would look for those sorts of transportation options.
Absolutely.
And have a mechanism to distribute that information. And, you know, I, because this has just recently happened, a person who was intending to go to the Northwest Human Services in West Salem couldn't see the provider that he, in this case, he wanted, and so was given an appointment over here at the Total Health Clinic in Monmouth, which is connected with them.
Okay.
And those are two links, and there's probably, perhaps one in Dallas as well. I mean, that people, and those people don't always have transportation options.
Right, yeah.
And.
Yeah, so if those services are not on the actual path, they would be able to call 24 hours in advance and, and request the bus to take them to the door. So that would still be an option for those folks if, if they have a disability and they aren't able to walk a thousand feet.
Or have a car.
Or have a car, right.
I mean, that's a big, that's a big thing for a lot of the.
Right, so is your question about getting from Salem to Monmouth?
Yeah.
Okay. So someone would have to use our 40X service.
Yeah, there you go.
To go from Salem to Monmouth and then transfer, if they aren't able to get to where they're going from this, from this stop, say at Main and Echols, they would need to transfer to.
Sure.
County, Polk County Flex, yeah.
Are there park and ride lots that you provide? Not necessarily, perhaps in this, you know, in the, in the Monmouth-Independence or the Polk County, but other places as well?
The only one that we really connect to is the Dallas Walmart parking lot. We used to serve Rickreal, and you can see that Tillamook County's bus does serve Rickreal, the 70X does serve that park and ride still. When we used to serve that, it was very few people who were using it, so we are not, we are not serving that. But there is a bus serving the Polk County Fairgrounds there in, in Rickreal.
But if somebody, if somebody drove in from Falls City and they wanted to, you know, sort of get on that loop deal.
Sure.
If they don't have a lot to park in, they're going to park in the neighborhood.
Right, so.
And that, or downtown in front of one of our businesses, which is an issue. We hear about that often. So I'm just sort of brainstorming here. If there's something that we as a council might be able to do to figure out, you know, some, some public parking.
Some kind of option.
Options.
Yeah.
That would keep them out of the neighborhood, make it convenient, not impose on anybody that's got the space. I don't know, we could think about that.
Right. That would be great, yeah. I work with one of your counselors on a daily basis, so we could.
We'll put her on.
Yes, and full disclosure, Councilor Belt, who is on a work, away at a work conference, is obviously well aware of all of this, can keep us updated and help us figure out what it is we can do to support.
That would be wonderful.
And let alone, just let folks know about the current service and what kind of options are being considered, so.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming and giving us that.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Sorry, we can't encourage more folks to take the survey since we missed out by having fewer meetings over this summer.
You did your part, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Take the bus instead.
Take the bus, take the bus.
Do us a report, that'd be fun.
I will, but I can't do it till January.
So I would like to move to the portion of our agenda where we actually give reports about some of the activities we have been involved in over the prior few weeks. And interestingly enough, following up on a discussion about transportation, a group is meeting in Polk County to really look at what are these transportation options offered by chariots and also by other individuals around the workforce. As we've heard, their service runs currently from 5, or 7:30 a.m., or 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And we have employers with different shifts. And so a group that was brought together through WorkSource Oregon, our statewide Employment Services Department, has been meeting and will continue to meet. Manager McClure and I attended a meeting of that group to kind of kick off and understand what some of those issues are for employers and employees, which might not be served by this service, so. But eventually, it could help feed into this service. So that is one work group that I attended. I also attended, over the last few days, the Oregon Mayors Association Conference, and that was held in Medford this year. It is a group that is coordinated with the League of Oregon Cities to have all of the mayors. There are currently 207 members of the Oregon Mayors Association and really exchange ideas, get additional training in how to be effective and how to have effective council work. And that was a really great experience. We were in Medford and found out a lot of neat things going on down there. It is a large and booming city. Luckily, the smoke stayed out of the way during our time there, but some valuable time there. And while I was there, I met the mayor of Canby. And I bring that up because for those who've read the Polk County Itemizer Observer, he and I had some friendly discussions about what you may have read about, which is the city of Canby is in negotiations with our city manager, Scott McClure, to take the position that they have open there. And we just wanted to acknowledge that we don't have any news on that front. That council meets tomorrow night, so we are not here to announce anything. But I did want to let folks know that after, after meeting with Mayor Hodson and just saying that Canby's an amazing city, it's got some similarities, it's a little bit, quite a bit larger. They have their own utilities and their own transit system, as we heard, and a lot of other city services, a very large 300-acre industrial park, some very amazing things. They also have a Highway 99 running through the city at 99E, not 99W. So I just wanted to let folks know that we, we don't have anything to announce, but and our esteemed Councilor Lainne Shutterly has, is prepared to kind of talk us through what some of those, what that will look like, what is typical for a process, if we do get the word between now and our next.
Having just finished that process in Dallas, for the third or fourth time, something I'm rather familiar with.
So, just so you know, we are not, we have nothing to discuss, but we are also prepared to move and start discussing those things once we, if we know that we have an opening for our city manager positions. I just, I will say on a personal note that the mayor is very excited about how Mr. McClure has raised up this city and, and a lot of the things that are going on there. Just, they're very excited to have somebody with the kind of experience and background and proven record of getting projects done, of hiring great department heads and staff to keep our city moving forward. And so we will see, we will have some news next time. That was all I had, and we do have some council reports. Looks like several of you have been busy attending meetings, so we will start with Councilor Carey and the Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Planning Commission met on July 25th. I was not in attendance. I was on, on my way to Crescent City, California, and I'll, I'll talk about a little of that later, but it was just as well because there was a consideration of, of a, the Phase 8 of the Edwards Edition, 23-lot expansion there, that, and there was discussion about that, and, and sometimes those are, it's not good if I'm there and hear testimony. They also had a, a hearing on the sign variance for the tractor supply. In Crescent City, there is a tractor supply, and they had too many things going on. I was dying to go in and like check out the merchandise, you know, but I didn't get it. And I will have to say, the sign was very attractive, so we will be fine with, with their, their sign.
We may have to have an ex parte site visit discussion if we go into a hearing.
Well, I'll be happy to recuse myself on that one. I don't think anybody will have any difficulties. And then there was, they also had a work session, put some finishing touches on the short-term rental discussion that Suzanne presented in work session last time, and I think it won't be long, and we'll see something come forward on that. Next meeting is August 22nd.
Okay.
For your information.
All right. Thank you very much. And Councilor Sharmer, the Senior Advisory Board.
Thank you. The, the members of the Senior Advisory Board met on July 23rd. They were very happy with their results from the parade. They won the most patriotic float, and I think they won third place in most effort. The senior centers had five new members, and they really are getting a lot of members. They have a lot of great trips planned in the future, including a trip to eastern Oregon. They need, speaking of those trips, they need $40,000 to $50,000 for either a new van or to improve the van they have, and they only have $12,000 available. The Friends of the Senior Center have donated $10,000 for the design for the new deck that will be going out. The center is trying to become accredited. Once that happens, it will really enhance their ability to get grants. Two openings on the Senior Advisory Board, so would really like to encourage anybody who is interested and cares about their senior center, I'm looking at you, Royal Johnson, to apply. We had board elections, and with no big surprise, Pat Olson was reelected as the president, and Jerry Blankenheim was reelected as vice president. So when they really need a secretary, nobody is able to function as the secretary. So they'll be meeting again on August 27th.
All right, thank you. Interestingly, talking with several mayors, trying to fill boards and commissions is basic across all sizes of cities, and many of them have just gone to having smaller committees so they can maintain quorums. So interesting discussion about how they're recruiting and different options. Councilor Silvernagle is not here. We'll have to wait on that tree advisory report, but Councilor Chris Lopez, MINEET.
MINEET has been busy. I have a number of things, a number of things to report to you, all, all very exciting news. The easy video changeover has completed. Most of the feedback that we've received back from the community has been positive. There have been a handful of people that have had some troubles with it. I will urge anybody that is still experiencing any issues to reach out to MINEET. Their customer support is really incredible, all people right here in the community. Most of their customer support team are, are Western Oregon grads and really, really anxious to help. They're, they're really excited to be able to help if there is anything, any lingering issues with that. But most of that's been, most of the feedback there has been positive. I also have an update on the Lifeline program. That's something that I brought the last, in my last report. This is a federal program that we're applying for right now, which offers subsidies on both phone line and data service. And this would be for, for lower-income individuals. We don't have the application fully completed and signed back in hand, but we are hoping that any day now. I understand that it's, these things just take time, anything you're doing with the federal government and trying to get them to, to come, come back to you with anything. We also completed a review of, of the general manager, or the CEO, rather, of MINEET. He had not had a review in a number of years, over two years, to be exact, and so we did complete his review. We did also complete a, you know, a reevaluation of his pay and a slight adjustment up. And a lot of that was in light of the success of the G-PON. I know that we've talked a lot about G-PON in the past, in the past year or two, ever since I've been on council and even watching council. I'm happy to, happy to announce that it is 85%, 85% complete. And with that 85% complete, not only are we, are we on track to have full completion in less than half the original time, but we also. in less than half the original time, but we also took the budget, the originally anticipated budget of the project was 2.3 million. We've cut that down to 1.2 million. So, this is, you know, through finding efficiencies as far as speeding up the timeline, I know that it hurt a little bit at the moment to do these things a little bit faster, but we were able to find a lot of efficiencies there. Some of that was with the purchase of goods prior to, you know, tariffs increasing. A lot of these goods are coming from overseas, and the ability to purchase these goods and the new G-PON units in larger bulk under existing contracts. With that, all the customers that have been converted to G-PON, and this happened just a few weeks ago, now have new speeds. So, if, let me see, all of the, everything but the gig speed was increased. So, the 500 mags is now 600. Previous 100 mag is also, is now 300. 75 and 65, 75 mag and 60 mag are now 150. And that's a huge increase in speed without any increase in, any increase in cost. With that increase in speed, we've changed to a new advertising campaign, hinging on the power of local. So, Minnet's base colors have been changed to red to coincide with Western Oregon and Central Panthers, you know, really rooting in the communities that have given birth to it and that it's here to serve. So, keep an eye out for some new ads to come out. And if you do have any questions, if anyone has any questions, like I said, they're just a phone call away, and I'm always here to do whatever I can.
That's great. Thank you. That's a big haul for a small organization, so.
They've been very busy. I do have another item to report, aside from Minnet, if I may. I have, and this, I guess, would come under Community Announcements here. I've been going to, going to all but the last Music in the Parks, setting up a city councillor booth. So, if anybody wants to say hello to a city councillor, I've had councillor Kerry, I've had councillor Belts out with me as well. And if anybody would like to just have a chat, I've spoken with people about anything, everything from, you know, more normal issues, like things that we've dealt with already or in process of dealing with here in these chambers, such as, you know, such as the new city hall sidewalks, bicycle accessibility, two things that are a little bit further out there, but nonetheless incredibly engaging to talk about. There's a gentleman that was speaking to me at this more recent one on the concept of permaculture food forests. So, a lot of really interesting, really interesting information that I've had, had a chance to share and learn about. And if y'all will be at the park tomorrow evening, I encourage you to stop by.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, thanks for starting that up. And you are right, we are at the topic of Community Announcements, so if we have anything, anyone knows of anything else coming up? As I drove over here from my workplace, I happened to pass the National Night Out, which looked like a lot more fun than this, no offense to all of you, but watching our officers and Independence Police Officers running around the lawn of Faith Lutheran Church with kids with super soakers and water balloons, throwing out them looked like a lot of fun. So, sorry we weren't able to be there tonight. Anything else coming up that anyone knows of? It's nice at the end of August here. Yes, Phyllis?
Saturday is the Community Yard Sale.
Can you tell us about the Community Yard Sale?
I can't tell you a whole lot because it's being done by an outside person, but it is like $10 a person if you live in Monmouth and $40 per person if you live outside for a 10 by 10 space.
Okay, so they have space, renting spaces in Main Street Park to have a table for a garage sale, yard sale?
I just reposted it on our Facebook page today.
Okay, so the Monmouth Facebook page is the place to find out those details for folks who want to get some great bargains. That is being managed this year by the woman who runs the Polk County Flea Market, and so those details are available. Thank you for that reminder, Phyllis. That's usually a really popular event. And we will now move on to our city managers' report.
Thank you. So, a couple of things, summer reading program's almost done, so if your intent was to start that, you should get it done really fast.
Read fast.
Read fast, not much there. Then, a note on the senior center, there's so many things that go on at the senior center that people aren't aware of. They think it's kind of a narrow scope. Just recently, the upward bound program was doing cooking in there, so they actually used the facility there for cooking services. So, actually, another outside group was able to use that, you know, for their education program. So, just another way that our senior center gets used by the community. And then, development projects, you'd ask about South Town. We didn't get a fixed date on when they're really finishing, but they're moving into paving right now, so actually going to be paving the site. Buildings on the north will come open earlier. What they want to do is try to get two or three of the buildings open, plus the community center. And then, an interesting one, they're going to be moving in a leasing office. Actually, they're going to, we're going to park it temporarily on city property, right by the substation, and then they'll be able to use that while construction's still going on, so they can start getting people ready to go in the facility. But we haven't found out when they really think they're going to be ready or really open with anything, so. But they're progressing pretty well.
Are you able to give us a little information about the income limits for people who want to rent an apartment there?
I don't know anything about that, no.
They sent me something that was just a long list that said 60%, and then it had a whole bunch of family members from one to eight, and then it had dollar numbers. And I wasn't sure whether it was, your limit was 60% of those dollars if you, to qualify, or, so I don't know.
No, and sometimes with the different numbers, because sometimes you'll stack a 60%, but then depending how many in your family. And so, like if it's, if you're 60%, like it's an individual. If you're 60 with a family, then number that might bump you a pile up in the list.
Yeah, it said a family of three, the income limit was something like 37, 500. But then it said 60%. I didn't know what that 60% was.
Yeah, it's usually, I'm guessing that usually it's median income.
Right.
And so, they take that sort of of that, and then probably that's their benchmark, and then they ratio that in to get those family numbers probably set.
Okay.
And is that, that's, is that West Valley Housing Authority, or is that Polk CDC?
No, it's actually called Mountain West.
This is a private development.
It's actually a private project.
Oh.
So, not one of our housing authorities.
Wow, okay.
Mountain West, that's Larry Takarski's.
Larry Takarski, Mountain West, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Separate from both Polk CDC and Housing Authority.
Wow. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so we got that. And then, a new project in the downtown, how often is it, do you get a building in the downtown built? That's not very, doesn't happen very much, because most times they're built environments. So, in this case, it's where the Windermere office is, just down the street here. They're going to build an office building for the Windermere office and then housing on top, so there'll be apartments. And then, and then back, their intent is to go back to the, kind of the gas station right now and then turn that into a restaurant of some sort, you know, potentially a brew pub, something. So, that'll be nice to have another, another building, increase our mass in our downtown. So, that'll be good to look at. And then on campus, the old Military Academy Building, they've submitted plans to turn them into a new welcome center, so it'll be transformed into a very different, different building it is right now, so. And then, a couple of ones, Kathleen Mason is our new Chamber of Commerce Director, and that's always a tough position to fill, because you have to do a whole lot, and there's not a whole lot of pay attached to it. We got someone with just amazing credentials. I mean, she's got decades of experience doing nonprofit work and employment, public sector, different things. So, we're lucky that we landed her, and she's just jumped right in, so that's been really good. And then, a last one, skate park, we got the skate park kicking off. They were in the parade, if you noticed them, so they had a really nice presence there. And then, they did a car wash at Les Schwab, and they raised like over $800.
Wow.
On the car wash, which I think is pretty good, from what I hear from other folks doing things.
I'm really sure of that.
So, nice thing is, they're going right, they're going right at it, so good for them.
Excellent. What's the location on the?
It'd be the S-curves, oh, actually the Rec Park.
Yeah.
But right when you turn, there's just kind of a grassy area by the one ball field, the outfield. We were going to tuck it in right there. And it's got a little bit of advantage, because you actually have a little bit of natural terrain to work with, and so, yeah.
So, right near the current skate park, basically.
Yeah, just kind of moved over, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And now is the time when we entertain citizens' comments. Those comments, if you wish to speak to the council, please fill out the comment card so that our city recorder has your information. Comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or councillors may ask the speaker for additional information if needed, or may convey to the speaker some information, if we have some facts that we can use to address the comment. We have on the speaker card here, if you'd like to receive follow-up information and communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. And we do have a speaker comment card this evening, so I will invite Tom Wade up to the table. And please speak into the microphone, let us know your name and location, and we'll hear what you have to say. Thank you for coming tonight, Tom.
Thank you. My name's Tom Wade, 150 Weiniger. I was here some time ago.
Can you speak into the microphone? We are streaming live tonight, so folks can.
Don't tell me that.
Ah, sorry.
I'm here to just put my two cents worth in on the sidewalk issue, as I talked about before. I'm motivated by Ms. Waggoner, who spoke, I think, at the last meeting. This present policy hits some of us, retired people on fixed incomes, as she mentioned during her discussion, really hard, especially when the city's responsible for the issue of messing up sidewalks. And so, she's paying $3,500. So, I thought I'd better come and at least show my support for her. And even half of that would be $1,750, that's, that's too much. I understand that the city council has asked city staff to compile detailed information about two of four options, that's my understanding, the cost-sharing and Corvallis plan. But of course, as we know, the council will make the decision in this regard. It's been over a year, so I'm hopeful that the council will soon make a decision on this important issue, affects many people. Hope they would choose the Corvallis option. We hear about this special place, Monmouth, let's, let's take a chance, let's do the right thing. We all benefit from sidewalks. I mean, we all know that. The city has a responsibility to ensure the sidewalks are maintained for the community as a whole. I appreciate the councillor's efforts at this Music in the Park, come to discuss these issues with people. I hope that you would look at this issue with the same urgency that you've approached the, the stormwater issue, which the council spent a large amount of money, I forget, I'm sure all you know, for, for people to come and convince us why we need a stormwater At the very least, we should be ready to write a check for those individuals who are, through no fault of their own, have a sidewalk that is, needs repair. I think that's about all I have to say, but it seemed to be, you know, to me, anyway, there's been a lack of information on this issue, lack of urgency. So, I'm hoping that you will respond to the situation and do something outstanding, really, so you can look back someday and say, I, you know, we did that, this council did that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for all you do. Appreciate it.
All right. And with that, I see no other comments. We do have one business agenda item tonight, and that is a first reading of an ordinance. And so, we will call our community development director, Suzanne Duffner, to join us and remind us of the process here for this first reading of an ordinance.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Yes, this is first reading of an ordinance to adopt Legislative Amendment 1902. This is an amendment to the Monmouth City Code that would allow the area of application of our Main Street District, our downtown district, to be able to change and add potentially properties in its vicinity in the, in the future. So, pretty small, short code amendments. We've had public hearings before, both the Planning Commission, it was in June, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and then the council had a public hearing on this in July, and at the end of it, did direct staff to prepare the draft ordinance. So, you've got that before you this evening. No further changes have been made to that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
So, any questions regarding the proposed ordinance here?
I would just comment that, that this does two things. One, it addresses a concern of a, you know, vital community member on, sort of on the short run, but it also allows for consideration for other properties to be included in this, but would allow and require specific consideration for each one of those, rather than to blanket establish a large zone. The Main Street District has some unique items related to it, and not everybody would want that, and it wouldn't fit everywhere. But because of the way it's been drafted, we can be selective, and each decision would be discreet. So, I think it's really a good, I think we've gotten to a good spot on this, on two bits.
Great. So, councillor Lopez, did you have a?
Oh, I, you know, the one word that comes to mind with, with regard to this is flexibility, and I appreciate the level of flexibility that was built in.
Okay, thank you. For a first reading, all we do is read this by title. We don't have a vote on this, just announcing to the public that this is under consideration. And at our next meeting then, we would bring forward the second reading and adoption. And Phyllis, I, according to my notes, this would be ordinance number 1386.
We don't assign a number.
We don't assign the number until the second reading. Well, thank you. Then, for the public, this is the first reading of an ordinance adopting amendments to Title 18 of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance relating to Main Street District, and that references Legislative Amendment 1902. So, we will have a vote on that at our next meeting. Thank you. And therefore, we are at council comments, so if folks have anything you'd like to comment about our business or activities, then please take this moment to do so before we adjourn to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
I'll be quick about this, because we're, because we're running a little longer than we anticipated, but I did go to Crescent City, and when I did, I went through Grants Pass and spent the night there, and was quite taken with their public art that they have. They have public art everywhere there, and a lot of the impetus is behind this Grants, the Grants Pass Bears. And they are whimsical, they're fun, they're, yeah, we drove around taking pictures. I mean, so it's a bit of a tourist attraction. They're wonderful, and I don't know whether our Arts and Culture could, you know, explore something like that, I don't have any idea, but it was just something I hadn't seen before. I would suggest that you use your newfound Minnet speed to Google Grants Pass Bears and see what you get.
How clever.
So, anyway, it was very cool. And it might be applicable to us at some point, I don't know, it's just very neat.
Yeah. And Dallas has just done their public art project, "She Flies With Her Own Wings," the state motto, and so they painted wings on several of those buildings, so it's a great thing. I do have one brief comment, and this is a personal nature. I would like to congratulate our councillor, Christopher Lopez, who recently became engaged. Fiancee Sarah Tracy works at Oregon State University through the Extension Service, and he surprised her with a lovely proposal, and I'd like to congratulate them both and wish them both well and... wish them both well, and excited to look forward to your future together, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, and Counsel Schinkel.
The Central High School Youth Football Camp starts next week, starts on Monday. Goes Monday through Thursday, begins at 1:00 PM till 2:30. You can register at the camp, so you don't have to do anything pre-registered. The cost is, I think, $25, but it's, it's a full week. It's run by the players and the coaches from Central, so it's a really good opportunity for kids to go get their legs warm before school starts again, so.
Great, thank you for that. All right, at this time then, we will be adjourning to the Urban Renewal Agency. We will step to the back for that. Then a reminder, the Urban Renewal Agency Executive Session, and that executive session will be open to the media. I'll read that again. We will then come out of that and return as council to our work session, learning about our public hearing responsibilities, and then the council will adjourn to executive session.
We usually stay there for urban renewal.
Urban renewal? Okay, I thought since we were having executive session, we would move back, but no.
I think we can break it. Why don't you go ahead and do the business side here, then we can take a break.
And then we'll take a short break and go back.
That'd be great.
All right. So, there, yeah, there's probably a bunch of stuff here. I'll give it to them. It's on the ground. Okay, and so, I would like to adjourn the regular session of the Monmouth City Council, and we will call to order the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency, and we will have a roll call. Please, Phyllis.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Dr. Sharma.
Dr. Sharma.
Dr. Sharma.
Here.
Mr. Schinkel.
Here.
Ms. Kins.
I am here. So our only topic tonight, we do actually have a consent calendar included in your packets, were the minutes of the Urban Renewal Agency meeting of June 18th, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar in those minutes.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar is presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you. And we have one item of business before us, and that is a design assistance grant application. So, Suzanne Dufner.
Great. Yes, it's kind of a different grant application. We've done some facade grants recently, but we haven't had one of these design grants for quite some time. The city's Urban Renewal Agency, as you recall, does have a grant program that helps with facades, and also a general grant assistance program. And then their third program is actual help with design assistance, architectural services to help with the early stages of a project, when you're kind of laying out how you want that facade to be improved. So that's what we have before us, is a design assistance grant for several buildings that are all in a row on the corner of Main Street and Broad. Their address is 275 to 295, probably know them better as the old Polk County Bank Building where Tan Republic is currently located at now. Next to that is the, the old Ross Theater, which is, I think, occupied still by the Costume Creations. I always think of that as the Yoda building. And then, the property owner that owns those two buildings, Pro Rentals LLC, also recently is in the process or has purchased the building next to that, the Haugen's Portrait Studios. So this design grant application is for all three of those. They're all attached, so you wouldn't necessarily know that they were separate buildings. But the request is for a design assistance grant in the amount of $2,500. It would provide design services to look at options for the exterior improvements to these buildings, to create more of a unified storefront. The, so to, the, the product would be providing concept drawings that would show improved exterior alter, alterations or elevations. They're looking at making changes to, there's an old wooden marquee sign that's on the Ross Theater building, so looking at making some improvements to that, some different options, as well as some historically appropriate signage. There's been a number of 211 siding and some changes made to the building, kind of covering up the, some of the more historic aspects of the building, so looking at pulling some of those layers back and bringing back some of the old windows and, and openings. So some pretty exciting work that I think would really improve and beautify our downtown. And then, kind of an additional component to that design work is that the property owners are also interested in exploring an expansion onto the back of one of the buildings to be able to provide kind of some more meeting space, and then second story residential use apartment up above. So that'd be part of the design as well. There, in your packet with the report, you'll see some attachments there. There's an architect's proposed bid, as well as some information on his qualifications. There's also pictures illustrating some of the existing storefronts, and then also a historical building storefronts that they're trying to restore some of that work back to. So just in terms of our urban renewal district plan, the, the work, the proposed design grant is consistent with promoting the development of a unified and cohesive Main Street District and promoting redevelopment of our, of our downtown properties to increase business activity. So I think there's definitely a connection that we can make there. Staff is recommending approval of the design assistance grant. The property owners have indicated a desire that, you know, step two, at once they've completed the design assistance work, to actually come forward with a probably facade grant after that, to actually implement some of those improvements and make the changes to the building. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. There are some sample actions and a, and a proposed motion in the, on page two of the report, in terms of financial implications. We have budgeted $30,000 for this fiscal year, that we're now currently in the next fiscal year, and so we do have funds available for the request.
How much did you say?
The grant request is, how much we have budgeted? We have $30,000 budgeted. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So questions? Yes? Laura? I'll jump.
Oh.
If you're ready.
Yeah, sure, I am. Normally, or often, and I don't know that we've seen many of these design elements, but in the facade grant, it's typically a 50% match. I don't know that that applies here, and I don't have any idea what the cost of the design services will be. That's not noted. They're only asking for the grant amount. And would that be 100% of that? Would that be?
I think the scope of work in the architect, it says scope of above work, $2,500. So this looks like this is the full amount, actually, of this design work, which includes three phases. And actually, a couple of the phases, it indicates it provides construction drawings and specifications to be able to get a building permit. So it seems like pretty extensive work, some concept drawings, as well as the, some actual construction drawings that would be enough to apply for a building permit. So it's a pretty extensive scope of work for $2,500, just looking at this.
It is. We typically have asked for the developer to have some skin in the game on, on these. I don't know that we've really, you know, I mean, again, because this is a little different. I mean, this is...
Yeah, so for the design assistance grant, we do not have a minimum or a grant match requirement. I believe the intent of that grant program is to encourage property owners to explore making those improvements that they might not otherwise fund and go forward with. So, yeah, we're really trying to kind of serve as that catalyst to, to kind of prompt them to, to do some better design than they might otherwise do.
The, you know, and again, and, and that's, that's good to be refreshed on that, because there's a fair, a couple of things, areas of concern that are in the backside, in the back of the building, that would not necessarily qualify for the facade, but, but it sounds like they would for the design.
Yeah.
You know, again, I'm totally in support of this. I'm just trying to be...
Right.
Different program, different criteria, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I think as they're working through the grant application with the applicant, it was a little, there was a little bit of confusion over, you know, putting all the information in, like, the work that they actually want to do, right? The physical, tangible, what you can see, and it was like this, so what you see on the, you know, making the actual improvements on the photos is more of phase two, you know, after we've got the designs and the plan, the concept plans.
That would not qualify, though, for the, yeah, so they'll need to have a different sort of proposal.
Right. There would be another grant application, yeah, in the future if they, yeah, move forward. That would detail out that work.
What did they do on the, they, they received one in 2010. What, what was the, you know, what did they do on that?
Yeah.
And I kind of read this quickly. I didn't drill down like I already.
And so, the, the research that I did on those files, it appears that they, that work was done for the, the old bank building where the Tan Republic is, the one on the corner. They did some of the repair work to the, to brickwork and, and painted the building with that. So they didn't actually do anything, from my understanding, on the Ross Theater side. That one actually expired.
This seems to focus more on that. So that, so that'd be a good way to leverage the 2010 dollars.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it, too. Right, that they are trying to continually make some improvements. And they also own, same, property owners own the buildings on the other side of Broad Street and the corner of Main, so where Mongo's Sign Shop is, and Barn and Branch, really cute little retail store that opened up recently, and down on the Broad Street side, there's Skippers and Female Depot. So you've seen some of the improvements that they've put into, to those buildings as well along the way.
Additional comments or questions about this design assist, Chris?
Historically, how many, how many of these applications have we had in a year?
Of the design assistance? Well, I found one in 2008. I had to dig back through the old files, but there was one done in, I think it was 2008, for a building on Main Street. So they're, they're really not that common, and maybe that's just, we need to get the word out, I need to get the word out better, that we have this, you know, assistance available. So this will be a good, to remind folks, I think, you know, if, if we can maybe publicize that a little bit, that, that this work that's being done.
You know, pardon, but, but when we get to the facade, there, there are two addresses there. So they can have arguably two facade grant requests, or one for each address, as I recall.
Yes, I need to go back and read that a little more carefully, but it's, there's actually, I think there's three addresses there. Yeah, there's the, or three businesses. So, yeah, we'll have to tighten that up and look at that a little more closely when we come back in the future for, but yes, I think we have allowed individual addresses to apply for $5,000 each through the facade grant program.
Yeah, it's, it's a range there, because the Ross Theater address shown in the photo is 281, so it's from 275 to 295, and there's a third address.
Yeah, and there's actually two storefronts. Yeah, the storefronts, it looks like, so.
All right, any other questions? We do have a recommendation from staff to approve this. It does meet the guidelines of the grant program, and again, a good reminder that this, these funds are available and budgeted, so I will entertain a motion.